Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock and I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education, work session to order. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved Heather.
Second Akita.
All right, thank you. A motion has been made by Ms. Duncan. It has been seconded by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Next Shirley Chesser, our chief academic officer, will recognize our staff and students. Dr. Oats? Ms. Duncan? Please join me.
And good evening to you, Madam Chair and Madam Vice Chair, to our board members, Dr. Oats, and to our guests that are in attendance. Tonight, we have the pleasure of recognizing our middle school and high school students who were grand champions in our Rockdale Regional Science Fair and advanced to represent us in the Georgia Science and Engineering Fair held in April in Athens, Georgia. This is a large group, so we'll divide it up into smaller groups and then we'll take a photo before moving on to the next. We will begin with our middle school science fair winners, who are all from General Ray Davis Middle School. First tonight, we have Ariana Bloomfield, who is a regional science fair grand champion and state science fair third honors. We also have Jewel Williams, who is a regional science fair grand champion and state science fair third honors. Willem Yulo, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair fourth honors. Nua Harris, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair representative. Brenda McRae, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair representative. Nisa Ramos, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair representative. And rounding up this group, we have Alexandria Sands, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair representative. Oh, your daughter. Do you want to come and get your baby certificate then?
Yeah.
All right. And parents, you're welcome to come up and take photos if you'd like, but Michelle is also here and she will capture those photos and will post them on our social media. All right, congratulations. Next, we will recognize our high school science fair winners, who are all from the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology. Again, all students were regional grand champions, so I will share their placings and awards for state level and beyond. The regional science fair judges can choose to send up to five students directly from region to the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair, which will be held May 11th through the 17th in Los Angeles, California. The following students will represent the Magnet School and Rockdale County at this prestigious international event. Tonight, first, we have Alexis Apayo, who is the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair Representative and the regional grand champion, state second honors and best in category in biochemistry. Hannah Coley, she is the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair Representative, the regional grand champion and a state representative. J.C. Hirth, the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair Representative, regional grand champion, state second honors and best in category in biochemistry. Camila Moreno, Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair Representative, regional grand champion and state second honors. And Kathleen Stoltz, the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair Representative, regional grand champion and state second honors. Hannah, you get to take this picture all by with these wonderful board members and our superintendent tonight. Congratulations. Our next group brought home either first, second, or third state honors. We have Sidney Hammett, who is the regional science fair grand champion, state first honors, the Rico Sustainability Award, the Wesleyan College Math and Science Award, best in category in environmental engineering, and top 10 overall. Prakash Gupta, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair second honors. Muna Yasin, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair second honors. Nikayla Bruington, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair third Pericia Moeman, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair third honors. And Andrea Walker, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair third That rounds up this group. All right. Dr. Gupta, you're welcome to come over here if you want to get in the center and take your picture. Did you get it, Dr.? Okay. Our next group was awarded fourth state honors and/or specialty awards. We have Ariana Boyd, who's the regional science fair grand champion, state science fair fourth honors, and Society for In vitro Biology Award. Haley Durin is the regional science fair grand champion and state science fair fourth Victor Olufuwote, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair fourth honors. Ryan Rakestraw, regional science fair grand champion, state science fair fourth honors, and Society for In vitro Biology Award. Isabella Waller, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair fourth honors. Precious Boboja Daye, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair Wesleyan College Math and Science Award. Malene Bupkina, regional science fair grand champion, state science fair Association of Women Geoscientist Award. Delano Page, regional science fair grand champion, state science fair UGA Mathematics Award, and USAID Science Champion Award. And last in this group, we have Alex Rojas, regional science fair grand champion and And congratulations. And our final group tonight was awarded the regional grand champion and represented the Magnet School in Rockdale County at the Georgia State Science and Engineering Fair. We have Hannah Behary, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair representative. Zoe Cannon, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair representative. Alexis Davis, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair representative. Ariana Davis, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair representative. Aidan French, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair representative. Brandon Gibson, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair representative. Savannah Giddens, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair representative. Olivia Howard Bashear, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair representative. Baow Nguyen Lee, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair representative. Anaya Smore, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair representative. Ian Morgan, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair representative. Joanna Ri, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair representative. Rowan Rogers, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair representative. Chanel Solomon, regional science fair grand champion and state science fair representative. And finally, we have Samaya Williams, who is a regional science fair grand champion Madam Chair, that concludes our awards.
At this time, the board will take a five-minute recess to congratulate the recipients and their families.
Yeah, ready? Cheezers! Oh, Amber, yeah. Amber!
I think she's still tossing. Bringing a ward down, so, there you go. Awesome job, ladies.
You're gonna have a floating hand over somebody's shoulder. They're gonna be like, what is that?
I'm sorry. I have a...
Los Angeles this year. They're actually shutting down universal studios for them. They can't help themselves for a night, all the international science fair.
Oh, that's gonna be awesome. My best piece of man, congratulations. Don't say that. Be more discerning. Yes. I know you're proud. I know you're proud. What do you see now?
I can get the two of y'all first and I'll send this to you, too. Okay. One, two, three. I know, it's like, who do I look at? No, you're good. I'm supposed to take them for her, so. Okay, everybody look. Look right here. One, two, three. All right.
Here, let me go corral my foot.
Y'all slide a little bit this way so I don't have that screen. Okay. Right here. One, two, three. All right.
I want to congratulate all of our student recipients again. At this time, we're about to resume the actual working portion of our board meeting. If we could take the dais, we're going to resume our meeting.
The time is now 6:24 and I would like to call the meeting back to order. We will now recognize visitors. Do we have any visitors, Dr. Oats? Ingrid? Okay. No visitors today. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's cabinet updates. Dr. Oats, please introduce your cabinet.
We do have several presentations as our Teaching and Learning Division takes the podium, so we'll sit back and enjoy the presentation.
Well, good evening.
Madam Chairwoman, good to see you again. Madam Vice Chair Duncan? There you go.
Dr. Oats and our esteemed board members. The last time I came before you, I was a proud parent of a 2021 graduate of Heritage High School. This evening, I am going to straighten my jacket up a little bit. I am the proud mother of a 2024 graduate of Georgia State College of Arts and Honors College. So I share that with you tonight so you can celebrate with me and my family, but I also want to celebrate this with you and thank you for your commitment not only to my child, but all children of Rockdale County. So that warrants applause. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Again, that affirms a return on your investment of your time as well as the importance of the decisions that are made in this space. With that in mind, I will be presenting along with my lovely colleague, Shanita Russell, five action items for consideration this evening. First action item, Renaissance Learning Star Renewal. The recommendation reads as follows. The superintendent will recommend Rockdale County Board of Education approve the renewal of Renaissance Learning Star Assessment as our universal reading and math screener totaling The renewal is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and general counsel. Renaissance Learning Star Assessment measures our reading comprehension and mathematics achievement in elementary, middle, and high school. The assessment data is used to inform instruction as well as to differentiate instruction or intervention. Financial impact again is $225,745.20. The funding source is East Sploß. Next action item, NearPod. NearPod, the recommendation reads as follows. The superintendent will recommend the purchase of NearPod as an innovative platform to integrate current instructional resources to enhance the teaching and learning experience for all content areas totaling $94,612.80. Specifically, the integration of Renaissance Learning Star Assessment with NearPod allows teachers to gain immediate insight into students' performance. The purchase is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and general counsel. NearPod will assist in informing instructional decisions, allowing teachers to pivot in real-time strategies to address deficits for elementary, middle, and high school students in all content areas. Again, this resource will help to increase student engagement and differentiate instruction. Financial impact, $94,612.80. To give context for this specific item, it's a new item for CNI, but it's not a new resource for our district. When looking at the analytics with the support of the technology team, we learned that 50% of our schools and programs had a site-based license for NearPod. It's actually more cost-effective to enter into a district license that provides access to this resource for all schools. Next action item, ClassLink. The superintendent will recommend the renewal of ClassLink as an auto-rostering platform and a student lunch pad for student learned resources totaling $55,317.50. ClassLink provides access to educational resources and applications for students, parents, and educators. ClassLink streamlines the login process through single sign-on, making it easier for our educators and students to navigate various learning resources. ClassLink also provides analytics to track the usage and student engagement. The purchase is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and general counsel. Again, ClassLink provides the ability to efficiently and securely enhance student learning access to digital resources by integrating our resources for students, parents, and educators. Again, the financial impact is $55,317.50. The funding source is General Fund. Next action item, and I'll provide context for this specific action item. The action item is AP African-American Studies. To provide context, the DOE offered a pilot for African-American, AP African-American Studies. Our district entered into this pilot the second year. As a result, the Office of Advanced Academics wished to ask the board to sign a course submission request to the Georgia Department of Education and the State Board in order to make this a state-funded course. The action item reads as follows. The superintendent will recommend the submission of a new course request to the Georgia Department of Education for Advanced Placement African-American Studies. to the Georgia Department of Education for Advanced Placement African-American Studies. The College Board describes AP African-American Studies as an interdisciplinary course that examines African-American experiences through direct encounters with rich various sources. The learning seat resource Freedom on My Minds totaling totaling thirteen thousand one hundred forty-three dollars and ninety cents will support instruction for this course. Resources provided by College Board will also aid in designing learning experiences. Throughout the course, students are given an opportunity to learn topics about early African kingdoms and ongoing challenges and achievement. Again, the course adoption is contingent upon the approval of the superintendent, general counsel, and the State Board of Education. Once again, African-American AP African-American Studies has been a politic course and we're seeking to have this course to become a state-funded course. Financial impact thirteen thousand one hundred forty-three dollars and ninety cents. The funding source is East Splass. And I will say, with this approval, this course becomes a state-funded sort of course for all schools across Georgia. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Vice Chairwoman, Board, Dr. Oats Cabinet. Gives me a pleasure to come before you this evening. Um, normally when I come before you as part of our district's literacy team is as the language and literacy coordinator. I also serve as the EIP coordinator. And so I'm speaking from both lenses on tonight as I share this resource and the fifth action item. If you remember this timeline back in March, um, Dr. McCray presented to you as we went through our adoption process for our core resource. I want to bring this back to your attention um, and let you know that we did go in that first and second round. We did have an opportunity to not only look at what we would adopt as our core resource, but also looking at supplemental and intervention resources as well. Um, during our third round, which you see highlighted on the timeline, we had an opportunity to do a deeper dive into what is now our newly adopted core resource Benchmark Advance. When we looked at that core resource, we made a determination if it would meet the needs of our learners um, that are at most risk for not acquiring those foundational literacy skills. Wanted to make sure that it was a resource that would address the needs of our special populations such as our students with disabilities, our English language learners, along with our students receiving EIP services in reading. During that deeper dive, we are pleased to share with you that Benchmark Advance, which we adopted as our core resource, does in fact have enough supplemental resources to address the needs of our students in the general education classroom to support them for enrichment along with remediation. But our review committee, who consisted not only of our literacy specialists and our district literacy team, also did a deeper dive to look at meeting the needs of not only those learners, but our literacy support staff. That includes those teachers who are serving those students at most risk of acquiring those foundational skills. So during our third round of reviewing our resources, we added additional team members from the learning supports, uh, staff and also an ESOL coordinator to help us look at both our core resource and those resources that we were determining for intervention and supplemental support in the area of literacy. Um, what we were able to determine is that there was a need for additional support to improve those learning outcomes for those students at most risk with that verified risk. Um, and what we also were able to determine, and I would like to highlight, is that as we looked at our resource that we are bringing for you tonight as our supplemental intervention resource, is that it not only addresses the needs of our learners, but it also addresses the needs of our literacy support staff. This will be a first in our district to actually have a consistent resource that our ESOL teachers, EIP teachers, and special education teachers are using PK through grade five. With this resource, we were able to also make sure that our district has a vetted resource that is approved and also aligned with House Bill five thirty-eight, which is our Georgia Early Literacy Act, and Senate Bill forty-eight, which is our dyslexia law. As we looked at our intervention resource, we used that same vetting process that we use with the core resource. So we use the state's aligned, um, rubric. All eight components of that rubric were used with this intervention resource. So we looked at it in the areas of phonics, uh, phonemic awareness, writing, to make sure that it again would be aligned and support the needs of our learners at most risk of not acquiring those foundational literacy skills. In addition to using that resource, that state-approved rubric for vetting those resources, we also relied on the framework from the International Dyslexia Association. What was determined in that framework is that the program, the resource that we're presenting tonight does meet the matrix, the requirements that the IDA specifies are needed for that structured literacy approach, multisensory, multimodal instruction, direct explicit instruction to best serve our learners who are at most risk and most promise of not acquiring those foundational literacy skills, but also to address the needs of students with characteristics of dyslexia. So I want to present to you tonight the Windsor Learning Sunday System. And just so you, uh, if you're not familiar with this system, this Windsor Learning Sunday System is, uh, aligned again with structured literacy approach, addressing the needs of our learners, particularly those with characteristics of dyslexia. The authors of this particular system are Orton Gillingham trained. And so if you're familiar with that particular training, they have gone through that extensive training. They are certified and able to train in that particular, um, program. Windsor Learning Sunday System has four systems that they have to support the needs of our learners. You'll see the kits, the color-coded kits there. So the Orange Kit Sunday System LP. We've identified this particular resource to serve as a supplement and an intervention resource for our pre-K and special, um, education courses. For our pre-K students, what the Sunday System LP will do is afford those students to acquire those skills who have not had formal schooling and prepare them for kindergarten, um, standards that they will see after their pre-K. We also use this one for our special education students, recommending for special education students. Again, those students needing to acquire not only foundational literacy skills, but also those foundational oral language skills that they need to develop. Sunday System One and Sunday System Two. The recommendation is that we use these in our EIP classes for those students needing support in reading. Well, Sunday System One just serves as an intervention resource that again allows for a comprehensive review of those foundational literacy skills. What is unique about this system is that it does provide direct explicit instruction. Students are not connected to technology or a device. They are one-to-one with that teacher in a small group setting for direct explicit instruction. They do have manipulatives such as letter tiles, sound cards, um, whiteboards that they can work on to again acquire those foundational literacy skills, but also a multisensory approach. So they have tactile learning, visual auditory learning as they're going through the system levels. The programs are stage, not age, so meaning that we can have our pre-K through fifth grade students in the same system at a different level, acquiring the skills as they progress. There is a placement assessment to ensure that again, students are, the needs of those learners are being met consistently along with progress checks. Sunday System E is the system that we are recommending for our ESOL teachers. The benefit of this particular program again is to help our early, um, English learners learn those oral language skills and the nuances that are in the English language that may not be in their native language. And so with that, it is the recommendation that the superintendent will recommend that Rockdale County Board of Education adopt the and approve Windsor Learning Resources totaling four hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. The purchase is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and general counsel. The rationale is that the pre-K through grade five ELA Resource Adoption Committee comprised of educators in each of the district's schools recommends Windsor Learning Sunday System as the elementary supplemental intervention resource. After additional vetting, review of stakeholder input, and comparing instructional resources to new state legislation, Senate Bill five thirty-eight and House Bill, I'm sorry, House Bill five thirty-eight and Senate Bill forty-eight, um, and the new Georgia, uh, K-12 English Language Arts Standards, it is recommended to purchase a one-year subscription of Windsor Learning Sunday System with the financial impact again of being four hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars with Title I and L-4GA being the funding sources. Are there any questions?
Students have workbooks, consumable workbooks?
Yes, ma'am. They have a student notebook, also a student record book. So the student notebook is for students again to practice those skills at the sound, letter, and word and text level as they are receiving that direct explicit instruction from their teacher. There's also a student record book. So during the placement assessment, along with the progress monitoring checks, the, um, teacher is able to record the student's progress and track their data. That is correct. However, the workbooks are transferable from one system to the next. So if a student matriculates to another system, that workbook and record book goes with them. Yes.
For the AP African-American Studies, do we send, it's a new class. Do we send our teacher somewhere to get any education or professional learning on teaching this subject since it was new?
And Dr. Richardson, if you'll step to the mic so our viewing audience can hear you.
I'm gonna try my best to answer this on behalf of Beth Gillis, but teachers are trained to teach the course.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Is there curriculum with, and I probably missed this. I'm sitting right here, I know. But is there curriculum with NearPod or is it teacher-driven? Like the teachers have to put in assignments? Like NearPod is fairly new to me.
Okay, so this is a great question. Actually, there are resources embedded within NearPod that teachers for all content areas have access to. At the same time, teachers can create items to go into NearPod and it has features that allow students to actually input their items into NearPod for presentation. If you're thinking about it in real time, when we're doing this PowerPoint, NearPod allows the teacher to see exactly what the student is doing in real time and they can create an interactive presentation where they can do drag and drop. They can insert, they can respond back to each other. And honestly, when we started, when we shifted to COVID, uh, when COVID, uh, when we were doing virtual learning, NearPod was an asset to a lot of teachers to instantly transfer learning in real time for our students.
Is it taking the place of a resource that we've used before?
I mean. No, ma'am. It's not taking the place of a resource that we've used before. But again, we've used NearPod for a number of years. A lot of schools, at least fifty percent of our schools and programs have acquired NearPod, but again, looking at how much money each individual school is spending for NearPod, it's actually cost-effective for us to use it. And a unique feature, well, cost-effective for us to have a district subscription for NearPod. But I will say a unique feature for NearPod that I've learned as a science person with the integration with Renaissance Star, the teacher can instantly look at that student's assessment scores and star and assign assignments and enter in activities for student groups or individual students based on that assessment. So again, they can do that for math and ELA. My literacy people are backing me up because I've been learning all things.
And NearPod has a, a content-based like library where, um.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. As a former educator, you would love NearPod. Yes, ma'am.
Shanita, if, if you would, go back and share with us, with our board and our public your roles, your specific roles.
So yes, I serve as the language and literacy coordinator. What that affords me, the opportunity to do is to work with our pre-K through grade twelve, uh, teachers in providing them with professional learning. Um, our primary focus this year has been on structured literacy along with dyslexia. So we have four cohorts that are going through the dyslexia endorsement where I serve as the instructor uh, for those teachers. We also have, um, I also serve as the reading endorsement instructor for some of our, uh, teachers this year as well. With the science of reading, um, and that structured literacy approach, a number of our teachers are going through, um, letters. You are familiar with letters. Uh, and I serve as one of those facilitators for that, along with the Georgia Literacy Academy modules um, that we're completing and teachers are completing, providing them with that support. So in the upcoming year, I will continue to serve as that facilitator or instructor to continue to provide that. In addition to that, um, supporting these EIP teachers, et cetera, who are working with the intervention resources um, and ensuring that they are not only using the resource with fidelity, but also aligning it to the expectations of our state, um, legislation as it relates to the science of reading and structured literacy approach. Um, and so that is the role. Also serving as the EIP coordinator, I have the opportunity again to, um, work with our schools to ensure that our students who need to acquire not only literacy, but also numeracy skills are, um, addressed and that they are supported. Um, and this year we were able to once again serve those students, make sure no students were waitlisted um, and that they were assigned to a certified teacher within their building to address those needs.
Yeah, and so I have a follow-up question, Shanita. Are you ready?
Yes, I think so.
When do you sleep?
I don't.
And, and, and this, we had a discussion in our, uh, our finance committee meeting talking about how we can assign specific duties, multiple duties and responsibilities to staff. And I just had to take advantage of what you shared because it's a real-time example of how we're very mindful of trying to make sure that, and I know for a fact in other districts, there would be three to four people doing the work that you've just described. And so thanks for all you do and, uh, I appreciate it. We all do appreciate it. Absolutely.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Are there any other questions?
Yes. Um, it's easy, I promise. The, the star, the NearPod and the ClassLink, um, you give a total of the financial impact, but it doesn't give the length of the contract or those all annual contracts or multi-year?
Each of those items are annual contracts.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Go ahead, April.
All right. Well, good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Duncan, members of the board, and Dr. Oats and Cabinet. I'm April Fallon, Director of Community and Student Support. And tonight I have three new but recurring contracts, um, as action items. So last year at this time, um, I presented this same slide pretty much. Um, but I, I wanted to highlight that there has been a national shortage of school psychologists and unfortunately that has not improved this school year. As you can see on the slide, we currently have two actual employees and we've had to get creative and recruit contractors from a variety of agencies as well as independent contractors who work part-time or less than part-time. Um, we've had close to a fifty percent increase in referrals from two years ago. And beginning next school year, as you heard, um, Shanita mentioned, with Senate Bill forty-eight, um, it will require local school systems to screen students in K through three for characteristics of dyslexia. So we know that will ultimately increase the caseload for our school psychologists. Second, school-based mental health services. We proudly continue to partner with various agencies to provide these services to our students. We continue to have a strong partnership with Academy for Family Empowerment here in Conyers, who we've contracted with for more than ten years. They currently provide three therapists. They are based at each traditional high school. And I just have to say, each therapist has her own office, um, in the building. The principals absolutely love the therapist being there. The students have come to rely on them. They know where their office is and they really, um, like having that support within the building. AFE is also in the process of hiring another therapist who will provide groups over the summer and throughout next school year. So that means that we pay for two therapists and then Academy for Family Empowerment pays for two therapists. These are just a couple of our other, um, contracting agencies. And then we do have a, the L-4GA therapist who of course is part of that grant. Um, she serves students without insurance because that, that's sort of hard to find. So we really wanted to reserve her services for those particular students. We still have our ongoing partnership with U Point Health and so they provide a part-time therapist at Pine Street Elementary School and JH House. And this year we were able to acquire a full-time therapist at Conyers Middle School and they have absolutely loved that. We also work with Positive Growth out of Decatur and they drive to Rockdale to see our students. And we were able to acquire a therapist from them to, um, just solely serve Alpha Academy. We felt like that was an important place, um, for our students to receive services who might not otherwise receive those kinds of services. So the three contracts, um, for as far as the action items tonight, Soliant Health slash Blazer Works. They are the, um, current provider for our contracted school psychologists. So we are asking for nine of those. Academy for Family Empowerment, as I mentioned, um, are, um, ongoing to school-based mental health therapists. And then this third one is really contingent upon not having contractors from Soliant. So, um, really Horizons is going to be a backup plan. And so we hope that we won't have to use them because we would much rather have full-time contractors within our school system, meeting with our children, um, every day. But if Soliant cannot provide the contractors, then Horizon is located in Conyers and they test students at their site on weekends and on evenings. Not completely ideal, but they have helped us out tremendously this year when we've had those gaps with personnel. So, action items, Soliant Health, Blazer Works, um, the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the new contract completed annually for recurring services of Soliant Health LLC as a private provider for nine school psychologists to provide school psychological services totaling $1,244,196. The contract is contingent upon the approval by the superintendent and general counsel. Soliant Health is a private provider for school psychologists. Blazer Works works with multiple provider, private providers, including Soliant to provide contractors. So they recruit for us all over the United States. The providers are necessary to ensure that students receive appropriate psychological services. And again, that financial impact is $1,244,196 out of general funds. Second, Academy for Family Empowerment. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the new contract, again completed annually for reoccurring services for Academy for Family Empowerment Incorporated as a private provider for two school-based mental health therapists to provide therapeutic services for students totaling $108,000. The contract is contingent upon the approval by the superintendent and general counsel. Academy for Family Empowerment Incorporated is a private provider for school-based mental health therapists. The therapists are necessary to ensure that the students and families receive the appropriate mental health supports. And again, the financial impact is $108,000, same as last year. And then last again is our backup plan. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the new contract completed annually for reoccurring services for Horizon Psychological Assessment Center as a private provider for psychoeducational evaluations totaling $200,000. The contract is contingent upon the approval by the superintendent and general counsel. Due to personnel shortages, we must contract with Horizon Psychological Assessment Center for psychoeducational evaluations. The evaluations are necessary to obtain critical information about students' cognitive ability, academic achievement and specific skills related to the learning process. And again, that financial impact is $200,000 from general funds. Any questions? Yes. That is. Yes ma'am. Sure. So part of what they do, they were the ones that introduced us to Positive Growth Incorporated. And when a student is on the mobile van, they do a short mental health screening and they make direct referrals to Positive Growth as well. And then just because we developed the partnership with them, we make, we can make direct referrals to them. Yeah, so they've been a big help. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Yes. Yes. Wow.
I mean, I know, I know it's a wrong, it's a difficult question to answer, but have to be realistic.
Sure. So if we think about just one school population, number of students, the average therapist can typically only see about 25 clients during a week. So if you think about that number compared to the actual number of students in a building and we know that mental health issues have increased, it would be a high number of therapists that we would need to fill in those gaps. And we, I think the community reflects that as well because we also refer out to private providers within the community. But they often will have a three-month wait. So we know the services are needed and there's just not enough people.
What about the, you know, on the phone services, room?
Sure, like through virtual, we do refer out to that as well. So once we saw that there were gaps in the community, that's what we ultimately had to do. You can, I mean, the great thing about virtual services is if I'm here in Conyers, I could be seeing a therapist virtually who's from North Georgia. But for some of our children, virtual does not.
And that's exactly where I was going because I do know families that have tried virtual and that is exactly what their complaint is that.
Very hard.
I guess coming out of COVID and being isolated or feeling that level of isolation that led to all of this. They don't like the virtual aspect of it. They want to be.
And there are a lot of things that therapists do in person to establish the rapport, gain the trust, and that's very hard to do virtually. Not that same connection.
All right. Well, thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
I know that there wasn't a set number, but we got to think about how different of a services is for our students.
I agree. Very needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Tarek Iser. I'm one of the learning support coordinators and I'm going to review several different contracts tonight from our department. The first one is actually just a contract amendment from Soliant Health LLC. The recommendation is for the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the contract amendment for Soliant Health LLC to provide occupational therapy, therapist to provide services as outlined in the IEP for students with disabilities totaling an additional $20,000. Rationale, Soliant is a private provider for occupational therapy. The original contract was for $180,000 and 690, $180,000 and $690, sorry. The contract amendment will be a total of $200,900, $690. The district must hire an OT because of an employee attrition. So we had an OT that resigned back in December. We were trying to hire another direct and we're unable to. So this is an additional cost. Financial impact is $20,000 from general funds. These are the contracts I'll also be covering from learning support. The first one is the Huffton Mifflin Heart Court Purchasing Company for Reed 180, which is already in the district. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the contract to purchase Reed 180 Stage B and Stage C licenses for targeted students with disabilities and teachers in grades six through 12 totaling $66,328.92. The contract is contingent upon the approval of the superintendent and general counsel. Rationale Reed 180 is designed for students to receive systemic explicit instruction and practice of foundational literacy skills to develop their fluency, expand vocabulary and strengthen comprehension skills to become proficient skillful readers. The financial impact is $66,328.92 through IDEA funds and Georgia DOE Capacity Building Grant. This is a contract agency we have been using for quite some time. Stepping Stones Group, the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the contract for a private provider for speech language pathologist, speech path, speech language pathologist assistants and a sign language interpreter to provide services as outlined in the IEP for students with disabilities totaling $1,877,580. The Stepping Stones Group is a private provider. These services are necessary to ensure that each student will receive their services as identified as speech disability through FAP. The financial impact is $1,877, $1,877.58, I'm so sorry, three general funds. Soliant Health LLC is also a current contract that we have. The recommendation, the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the contract for a private provider for occupational therapist to provide therapy services as outlined in the IEP for students with disabilities totaling $109,440. Soliant is a private provider for OT. The occupational therapist will provide services as outlined in the student's IEP. The financial impact, $109,440 through general funds. Doretha Glenn is one of our private independent contracts. The recommendation, the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the contract for a private provider for speech language pathologist to provide services as outlined in the IEP for students with disabilities totaling $104,880. The rationale, Doretha Glenn is a private provider for speech language pathology. The provider is necessary to ensure that each student will be with an identified speech disability receives, receives FAP. This is also an SLP that is in-person. General, the financial impact, $104,880 through general funds. Speech Blossoms LLC, recommendation, the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Ed approve the contract for a private provider for speech language pathologist to provide speech services as outlined in the IEP for students with disabilities totaling $101,840. Rationale, the Speech Blossoms LLC is a private provider for speech language pathology. The provider is necessary to ensure that each student with an identified speech disability receives FAP. This is also an in-person therapist. Financial impact, $101,840 through general funds. Speak Vision LLC, the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the contract for a private provider for speech language pathologist to provide speech services as outlined in the IEP for students with disabilities totaling $103,360. Rationale, Speech Vision LLC is a private provider for speech language pathology. The provider is necessary to ensure that each student with identified speech disability receives FAP. This is also an in-person therapist. Financial impact, $103,360 through general funds. Metro Speech Works LLC, rationale, recommendation, the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the contract for a private provider for speech language pathologist to provide speech services as outlined in the IEP for students with disabilities totaling $103,360. Rationale, Metro Speech Works LLC is a private provider for speech language pathology. The provider is necessary to ensure that each student with an identified speech disability receives FAP. This is also an in-person therapist. Financial impact, $103,360 through general funds. TW Bell Speech Therapy LLC, the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Ed approve the contract for an independent contractor to provide speech language services as outlined in the IEP for students with disabilities totaling $104,880. TW Bell Speech Therapy LLC is a private provider for speech language pathology. The provider is necessary to ensure that each student with an identified speech disability receives FAP. This is also an in-person speech therapist. Financial impact, $104,880 through general funds. Are there any questions about the areas I've covered? No problem, thanks. Sure. So we currently have 23 SLPs. Because we have grown so much, as Ms. Fallon has referenced earlier, we are looking at adding additional SLPs. I'm also always, I mean, if, if you look, I have, the posting is up since beginning of school basically to continue to hire direct, serve, direct SLPs. I've not had any luck. So unfortunately, we do have a lot of contracts. I've worked very hard to decrease the number of contracts, but they're like school psychologists are extremely hard to find.
So each contract is bringing in an individual.
Each of the contracts except for Stepping Stones Group is one person and they're all therapists that have been with us in this district before I came.
And I saw that the, the first one was a larger amount of money, 1 million.
So Stepping Stones Group is teletherapist. Yes ma'am.
So how many therapists are we getting for that million?
That is 15 SLPs.
Okay.
And it does include SLPAs. However, at this time, the DOE has not given additional guidance and how that will look. So we won't be moving forward with the SLPAs. And then we do have one student in the district that requires an interpreter. And so that is also a sign language interpreter is included in that cost. They are annual, yes.
Great question. So we actually have about six students that go to the Atlanta Area School for the Deaf. This is a student that the parent advocated very strongly. He attended his homeschool. And so we have been very fortunate because they're extremely hard to find, but a wonderful ASL interpreter that is with the student all day.
Thank you.
Just a reminder for our board members to make sure your microphones are turned on when you're speaking. And it may there will be, I just got some real-time feedback from the viewing audience.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Phillip.
Well, good evening, board. Madam Chair Brown and Vice Chair Duncan, Dr. Oates Superintendent and Board Members and General Counsel and Ingrid. I have a few action items tonight. Before I go to my action items, let me just say what makes me happy to be a part of the Rockdale team. May I take that boss, may I take a minute for that? Hearing our kids tonight just thrills my heart. They are amazing. And you get out in our schools and see our kids at work, they just are amazing. And then the people we have working for us. I sat at dinner Monday night with three employees of mine, people of 121 years of service to Rockdale County Public Schools. One of those is Donna Bean with 53 years and I'll have their pictures next month or the following month. And, but 53 years she's been serving as a bus driver in Rockdale County Public Schools. And so when you see those people and their commitment to her and she has no plans of stopping, she'll probably bury me, but she'll be driving a school bus. That's good. All right, let's get on with action items. How's this thing work? There we go. Super Ten will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the change order. One submitted by Skyline Construction Services for the approval, for approval May 16th in the amount of $50,897.45 to complete the old central office roof project, which is project number 1058.02 of Raymond Engineering. The change order request has been reviewed, validated and approved by the Raymond Engineering Building Engineer, Mr. Ben and by our executive director, Mr. Stewart. The rationale is this, to cover the cost of unforeseen conditions exposed at the removal of the old roof, specifically the non-tapered installation at Roof Area 7 and the absence of wood nailers at Roof Areas 1 through 6. We did pull standard core samples in Area 7 and it indicated the roof was, was flat, but it, it needed to be tapered. So we got that work taken care of. So that's $50,897.45 from East Blosd 5. Fire alarm systems and engineer contract, Super Ten will recommend that the Rockdale Board of Education approve the selection of Tanksley Jackson Associates as engineer firm for the Salem High School fire alarm replacement, the Rockdale County High School fire alarm replacement and the Heritage High School fire alarm replacement projects. Based on our engineers' fee schedule and the current estimated costs of these projects, be $91,500 for these projects. The rationale is the scope of the projects involves electrical engineering, oversight of the new and updated fire alarm devices installed in these three locations and assurance of compliance with our current NFPA standards. The current systems do not meet the latest compliance standards and we must get this in place as soon as possible. $91,500 from East Blosd 5. Our facilities, local facilities plan resolution. The Super Ten will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the tax resolution requesting the technical assistance of the Georgia Department of Educational Facilities Section with the development of the new Rockdale County Public Schools five-year facilities plan. Our current plan expires June 30th, 2025. By law, 20-2-260, we require to have a new plan every five years. This plan is to include new projects, additions, major renovations and modifications identified by us and by the Georgia Board of Education. We must have this plan completed no later than March 12th, 2025. And that's driven by the Department of Education's plan. There's no cost to us to get this plan put in place. Finally, for financial services, the purchasing department, wastewater, waste disposal, recycling services. The superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the selection of Georgia Waste Management Systems doing business as waste management as the contractor of choice from the Waste Disposal and Recycling Services bid solicitation is number 2024-0008. And this is not to exceed $250,000 annually. Effective July 1, 2024, this contract has four one-year extension options. Waste Management is the current service provider. This contract is contingent upon the approval of the superintendent and the general counsel. The service scope includes all of our, our Rockdale County Public School sites, handling of all waste disposal and providing extra coverage for high-volume times and specific events and considering all the categories of the bids, Waste Management is the best qualified provider. Waste Management becomes highly recommended by other just Georgia districts. They have been very responsive to our needs and very flexible with changes that occur. This is $250,000 from our general fund and Mr. Marky Dixon did outstanding job leading this RFP process and his team came up and brings this to us tonight. And that concludes Operation Services.
The contract amount before the 250 on the Waste Management.
$250,000.
What was their?
So, $6,000 some dollars in there for extra events. There's about $13,000 some dollars for unforeseen issues we need, and balances, what, $200,000? Do you have that with you, Joys? It's in my pack. I can give it for you. It's in the, it's attached to your action item. Yeah, it's in there.
I have a question. On the five-year plan, what is the process? I wasn't here when y'all did the last five years, so do you go school by school and look at?
So every, the plan is broken down into two sections: modifications and refurbishing items, and it's two different parts of that plan. And so with the state, we go through, and they have a time limit for, before we can get money or put in for different items, and it's, that's a whole list of, that's their scope. So they sit down with us and go through our plan. Bruce Stewart has been with us for a long time and still serves us part-time on the East Sploesd stuff. He leads this plan. And so we'll go through every school, and we have those laid out, and we, it's a big book when we get done.
I've seen the book.
But it identifies everything, and as I shared with our, in East Sploesd 6, you know, we pegged several million dollars in there for, and all that came from our facilities plan. We could spend another third on top of totally Sploesd 6 and not be caught up with what we project could happen, but it's an important plan that keeps us in line with where they're going, and it's a peer review. This five-year is a peer review, where they, they will lead, DOE will have a consultant with us, and they will bring in peers from across the state and spend a day going through our plans, visit selected schools that they choose on there when they get here, and they go through that plan. Very good system. I've been through it. I've served on committees at other locations, and it gives us a good guide to drive where we're going, and then we have to decide priorities depending on cash flow. Thank you all. Good evening.
Eric.
Chairwoman Brown? I think so. I'll make this brief then. Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, Dr. Oates, Board Members. Good evening. So tonight, I'm going to talk to you about some exciting stuff. Our phone system. So our phone system is aging. It is 20 years old. It's a voice-over IP system, and so it is time to change. And so, we spent about nine months looking at various systems, and we decided on the FortaVoice phone system. It's produced by Fortinet. You might have heard of me talk about this before, but we use Fortigate firewalls, which are produced by Fortinet. We've used them for over 10 years, and so it's a very good company. So the FortaVoice system is a unified communication system. It's a VoIP system. It's an on-premise system. They use the Forta phones and a soft client that we'll use at the district office for our receptionist. This system is a secure system, of course. It's built-in security with encryption on calls. It also prevents SIP attacks and different things like that. It's a very simple system to manage because it's a browser-based system that we can manage really from anywhere, and then cost-effective. It's really going to save us over $6,000 a month because we get to use all our, move all our landlines, like fax lines, all of that to this SIP system. So it's a very good system. Part of this, it's very feature-rich system. As you can see here, these are some of the features that it offers for our district, so we're excited about using this product. And so, tonight, the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the purchase and installation of the FortaVoice phone system from CPN Technologies for $225,657.77 under state contract, and this will be the removal of the old system that we have now and replacing it with a new system, and this comes from general funds. That's all. Thank you very much. Yes.
You're the only one that came to us with a savings plan. $6,000 a month. And they all walked out before you presented.
Any questions, anyone? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent Dr. Oates, remaining Board Members, and Cabinet. Tonight, I will present to you the preliminary financial report for April. The revenues for the month of April were $11.3 million, sorry. $11.3 million. The year-to-date, it was $180.2 million, and that represents 90.1% of the budget. Last year, this time, the revenue was $12.3 million, and the year-to-date was $165 million, representing 91.2% of the budget. Expenditures this April were $17.1 million. Year-to-date was $173.9 million, representing 84.8% of the budget. Expenditures last year this time were $16.5 million, $155 million year-to-date, representing 84% of the budget. Incumbrances were $881,159. The fund balance is $42,611,772. Last year's fund balance was $48,514,973. Our assets are $48,831,933. Liabilities are $6,220,161, and our fund balance again is $42,611,772. The superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale Board of Education adopt the FY25 tentative budget as presented. The rationale is the state board policy requires that the board to adopt an annual budget. Adoption of the tentative budget is necessary so that the public hearings may be held before the final budget adoption, which will be recommended in June. Approval of the tentative budget allows the superintendent to move forward without advertising the budget prior to adoption. That concludes. Any questions?
Any questions, anyone? Heather?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is that it?
I have my superintendent's update.
Okay.
When I asked our Director of HR, Ms. Stevens, to come forth with an important action item I've previously shared with the board.
Good evening, Madam Chair Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, Board Members and Superintendent Oates. I have one action item on behalf of the Office of the Superintendent this evening. The superintendent recommends that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the RCPS Strategic Waiver School System application and all of its relevant components, so as to grant RCPS the flexibility provided within the waiver accordingly. Pursuant to OCGA 20-2-80 and SBOE 160-5-1.33, Rockdale County Public Schools previously declared strategic waiver school system status to obtain flexibility for all its schools from the statutes indicated within its waiver. This statutory requirement was waived during the height of the pandemic, but is now resuming with districts being required to submit new contracts as amended at the discretion of the school district to the Georgia Department of Education for its approval. And that is it in the nutshell.
All right. Any questions, Board Members? Heather? Thank you very much.
There is no financial impact.
Thank you, Dr. O. That's the same, Heather.
I don't have any remarks beyond the presentation of that action item. Thank you, Ms. Stevens.
Okay. The Cabinet has provided numerous presentations under the section of information, so I would like to ask the Board Members to please review that information. Please review the April 2024 Board Minutes and provide any edits to Ingrid. We will vote on those minutes in the regular session. There is no old business, and there is no new business. The Cabinet has provided an overview of the action items 1 through 26 for the board to vote on next week. Is there a motion for the action items to be placed on a consent agenda?
Go right ahead. What was that? Because I went through all of them as they presented it. I went through all of them and checked them out.
Stephanie.
Positive Growth. I should say, listen, I need to...
Okay.
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 Thank you.
Is that clear? Do we have any other questions? Speak up, Stephanie.
We have a partnership with Positive Growth that allows us to make referrals. We do not exchange money with Positive Growth.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me try this again. The Cabinet has provided an overview of the action items 1 through 26 for the board to vote on next week. Is there a motion for the action items to be placed on a consent agenda? A motion? It's not time for, I'll give you time, okay? Just a second. So, do we have a motion to place these items on consent agenda? I have one. Do I have a second?
Second, Akeeta Palmer.
Thank you very much. A motion has been made to, by Heather Duncan, and second by, excuse me?
Ms. Palmer. Yes.
I haven't got to that part yet. Okay. So, agenda to the regular session has been made by Ms. Duncan, second by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Go ahead. I would ask that the strategic waiver be removed from the consent agenda so that we can further discuss it.
What item is that? What number?
Give me one second.
It's number five.
Number five?
Number five.
Okay.
And then also, I have, I want 21, 23, and 24 for the discussion.
Okay. Can you repeat those again, please?
21, 23, and 24.
Okay. Where items number five, items 21, items 23, and 24 removed from the consent agenda, do I have?
Madam Chair, I would request that number two be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion. So tentative budget.
Do we have any other recommendations? Anybody go make a motion?
I was gonna say, currently, you have a pending motion, so you can either rescind that motion or revise it, amend the motion to include all of those items removed from the consent agenda, and then you can vote on it, but you need to change your motion because currently, you just have a consent agenda with all the items on it.
Yes.
So I want to...
It's been seconded, so you need to address that issue, or again, Heather can rescind the motion and reframe it or revise it.
Okay. Go ahead, Heather. Okay, so?
All in favor?
Oh, yeah, so then, if no one wants to, if she doesn't want to rescind it, then you need to address the motion currently pending, and if it's voted down, then somebody can make a new motion, or if it's voted up, then that's the motion.
Okay. All in favor of the motion that's on the table? I'll oppose? Okay.
All right. So that motion died, so now you can make a new motion.
Yes. Okay, so?
I move that we make a motion, a consent agenda minus two, five, 21, 23, and 24.
You want to second her motion?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Well, you asked for the discussion, but y'all already had discussed.
We already had the discussion, right? Want to say anything?
Madam Chairwoman, if I might, just for parliamentary clarification, the items that have been indicated to be removed from the consent agenda essentially will be taken up separately for the consent agenda to be voted on.
Yes, they would be voted on a line item.
Right, right. Just wanted to clarify that for...
Do we have any further questions? Items number two, item five, 21, 23, and 24? Okay. Okay. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, so? Do I need to make a motion? No, so we're good to go now, right?
As long as, as long as Ingrid captured who the no votes were.
All right. Very good.
Two, five, 21, 23, 24. It's just separate vote, no discussion.
That's correct.
It's not that it's a separate vote. It's not that it's voting, it's that it's going to be voted on as individual items instead of all of the other ones just as one vote. So everybody will vote separately for those five items.
Okay. Okay, do I hear a motion to go into executive session? Second. Motion has been made by Ms. Duncan, second by Ms. Jones to go into executive session. All in favor. Motion carries. 727. Yeah, y'all, we're gonna go to...